Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the Jackson Public School District Regular Meeting of this Board of Trustees for July 26, 2016. Thank you all for attending this important meeting. We're happy that you are here to participate. Our first business will be the Pledge of Allegiance that will be provided through the Elementary Division. Dr. King will introduce our student, Ms. Nadia Stewart.
Great afternoon. Dr. Gray, Board President, members of the board and audience, it is my pleasure to introduce Nadia Stewart. Nadia Stewart is a third grader at Lee Elementary. She is the daughter of Martha Stewart. Her hobbies are hanging with her grandmother, playing with her cat, Mikey, reading about Ninja Turtles, and drawing. She loves Sunday School and rescuing any animal in distress. She is friendly to everyone. Ladies and gentlemen, Nadia Stewart.
May you please stand up. I pledge allegiance to the fight, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual for which he is just as for all.
Thank you.
Nadia, if you will stay there for a second. Thank you so much for bringing us the Pledge of Allegiance. I believe I probably see Mom here because she was directing you as you were doing the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's recognize Mother and any other family members and staff that's here and principals that's here for Nadia. Let's give them some love. Thank you very much. Nadia, if you'll stay here for a second. Our colleague Ms. Sims will give you a token of our appreciation for your being here.
We want to just congratulate you for just doing an awesome job, being a friend to animals, loving your grandmother, and being a good root. We congratulate you on giving the pledge and we have a small token of appreciation with your name on it, and we're going to take a picture.
Wonderful. Our prayer of invocation this evening will be rendered by our very own colleague, Dr. Richard Lynn. He gave me a bio that was like seven pages long, and I do not intend to read it at all. But I will tell you that Dr. Lynn is an absolutely wonderful colleague on the Jackson Public Schools Board of Trustees, and I am pleased to sit next to him, and we're pleased that he is a part of this awesome Board of Trustees. Dr. Lynn has served as the Vice President of the Board of Trustees, he's serving rather, and he's been a board member for two years, trustee for two years. He is the pastor of Morning Star Church in Utica, Mississippi, and is married to the lovely Ms. Kyla Lynn, and they have two lovely children. It is my pleasure to present Dr. Richard Lynn.
Amen. It is often said that we try to do things on our own, and then we realize that we messed it up because we hadn't asked the one who can do those things for us. In this time that we're going through now, it's important that we realize who is it that has the power to get us through the daily tasks and circumstances that we find ourselves in on a daily basis? Let us not forget that we did not get ourselves in the predicament that we're in on our own, and therefore we're not going to be able to get ourselves out of it. So there's a higher power that is greater than any power that is known to man that is able to get us through. Pray with me as we get ready to talk to the very one who has that kind of power. Now, Father God, in the name of Jesus, the one who has all of the power, not some but all of it, the one who's able to open the Red Sea and allow all of us to be able to walk through it and not get wet nor drowned, the one who has the power to do the things that we can only imagine, the one who gave us an opportunity as recently as today to be able to wake up and have the presence of our mind, to be able to know that we are still here, no matter what we've been through, no matter what the circumstance was, no matter what the situation seems like, it was you who still brought us through. Now, Father, we take out time to thank you for forgiving us for all of the sins that we've committed, those that we know of and those that we do not. Father, we thank you for the many blessings that you've already given us. We dare not ask you for another blessing until we take out time to thank you for those that you've already given us. Father, as we get ready to have this board meeting, we thank you for the protection that you've given each and every one of us to travel here safely. And Father, we thank you for giving us an opportunity to come to this place, to be able to be in our right mind that we may work together and work together as a group of people that you have created. We pray now, Father, that you bless this board, each and every one of the members, that, Lord, that you would touch the mind that all would be on one accord. And we pray for the school and the superintendent and all of the officers and teachers and even the janitors and the food workers and anybody that have anything, Father, to do with the development of the children. We know how precious they are to you, and Father, we thank you for giving us an opportunity to be a servant to them. Father, when it's all said and done, it is you and you alone that deserve all of the glory and all of the praise, for it's in Jesus' name we ask, amen? And amen.
We have six members, five members represented, and we are joined by our colleague, Mr. Oppenheim, on the telephone. And we await the arrival of our newly-minted trustee for hopefully for our next meeting. We'll now move to the adoption of the agenda.
It's a move, second.
It's a move and second that we adopt today's agenda. Questions? Those in favor? Mr. Oppenheim? Okay. Mr. Oppenheim, we've just adopted the agenda. Okay. Mr. Oppenheim, we've just adopted the agenda. His phone is, I'm sorry.
It's on speaker. Speaker on our end, right?
Mr. Oppenheim?
Check and see if it's on speaker.
Okay. All righty. We've just moved in second, motion second for the adoption of the agenda. How do you vote?
Yeah.
Thank you. Now to reading and approving of our minutes.
Madam President, Board of Trustees, we'll have minutes for this meeting and previous meetings on our next Tuesday meeting, August 2nd.
All right. Thank you. We'll ensure that those minutes gets incorporated into our next board meetings of minutes. We're now down to public participation by the general, general comments.
Board members, you have two persons who have signed up to address you this afternoon. The first person, Joy Hoag, if I'm pronouncing it correctly, Families as Allies, she would like to address you on the day treatment program.
Okay. Ms. Hoag?
I appreciate this opportunity. I'm Joy Hoag with Families as Allies. I'm the executive director, and we're the only statewide organization run by and for families of children with mental health challenges. And as my note said, I'd like to comment on the day treatment program or your plans for it on behalf of our organization. First of all, thank you for JPS's increased attention to children's mental health over the past several years. We're very appreciative of that, and we know that your plans reflect that interest, but at the same time, we have some concerns. One is that there's basically two umbrellas under which children in a school system can receive help for behavioral health care concerns. One is on the education side, both in regular education with things like RTI and PBIS and then under special education and those services mandated by IDEA. Then there are separate mental health services that are typically provided by a different provider that are brought into schools, that are things like day treatment and counseling and things like that. One concern we have is that although there's been significant progress in JPS, and I can say that, I was the monitor of your settlement over Capital City, and we are one of the organizations that although we work closely with you on many things, we still help parents file complaints under IDEA. There has been significant progress, but there's still a long way to go in any district, and there's still many challenges in JPS, and we wouldn't want you to dilute your efforts by beginning a whole new program that could actually be provided by another provider. And that is traditionally something that comes through the mental health system rather than the school system. Also, there's an inherent potential conflict of interest because if you're referring children to a service that you're also getting money for, there's the potential to put children in that service because there's money associated with them. And then also, we still, as an organization, see a tendency among some JPS staff to want to put children somewhere instead of doing everything they can to help keep them in the classroom. We know they need support, but a day treatment program provides a potential place to put children, especially if you're making money off of it. So we appreciate your interest in the children, but hope that you will take those considerations or those concerns into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, board members, you have a request from Jan, and once again, I'm not sure about the pronunciation, Hilligus, who wants to address you on privatization.
Hello?
Good evening.
Jan Hilligus from West Jackson, Word 5. I noticed two kinds of things very recently that surprised me a great deal. One is the small yard signs like you have outside this building saying that Kelly Services is hiring for substitute teachers. I had never heard that this had become a private service. I was a substitute years ago, and we came to the district offices for interviews and so on. Then I saw little legal ads in the paper that probably very few people read where you're advertising for vendors, for bids for vendors for some kinds of planning services and also for exceptional education services. And this troubled me greatly, and I wrote a letter to three of you on the board whom I know slightly and asked for information about when this happened and what this is all about. And I know it wasn't very long ago, so I haven't had a chance to get information. The one person who responded asked Dr. Gray and Ms. Nelson to respond, and I know they really haven't had time to do that. But today at this board meeting, I would appreciate if board members would make some kind of statement to those of us who are here and watching on television to just explain your view about all of this, because it seems to me that it's our very scarce public education dollars that are now going to be shared with private companies when Jackson Public Schools themselves, when Jackson Public Schools themselves should be providing those services. So I'm looking for details about how this happened and exactly what is proposed, but I would appreciate it today if we could hear from the board and perhaps from Dr. Gray just about what your intentions are and how you, why you support giving away all these services. What's next? Is Kelly going to hire teachers? How far is this to go in your view? Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are all the persons who've signed up to address you this evening.
Thank you very much. Dr. Gray, we're now down to Superintendent's report.
Yes, ma'am. Madam President, Board of Trustees, good evening to all. The vision for Jackson Public Schools is to have high-performing schools that serve high-performing scholars in a clean and safe environment. The wildly important goals of Jackson Public Schools are, number one, to increase academic achievement, number two, to increase average daily attendance for scholars and staff, and number three, to attract and retain high-quality staff. Our mission, we are building stronger schools together to have every scholar, every day, ready for life. JPS salutes the summer school class of 2016. I would like to congratulate the 30 seniors who graduated from summer school and received their high school diploma last evening. Students from Callaway, Forest Hill, Jim Hill, Lanier, Murrah, Provine, and Wingfield High Schools completed graduation requirements through the JPS Summer School Program. I applaud each of them for not giving up, staying the course, and finishing the race. We look forward to all of them enjoying successes at various colleges, universities, and careers. Online registration. Online registration for new and returning scholars continues throughout the district. Parents or guardians must make an initial visit to the school in their attendance zone to begin the online registration process. Parents can find out their scholar's school attendance zone by contacting the JPS Office of Enrollment Services at 601-960-8825, I'm sorry, 8852. Completing online registration requires an access to a computer with a connection to the Internet. Computer labs will be set up at each school for parents who do not have access to a computer. Schools will be open Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. Schools will be closed for lunch break from 11:30 a.m. until 12:30 p.m., and hours will be extended each Thursday until 6:00 p.m. to accommodate our parents. Summer reading. Parents and students, please don't forget about the JPS summer reading requirements. All students are required to read at least three books. Each student has one required book title and must choose two additional titles from any source on any topic and write a book log on each. For maximum benefit and incentives, students are encouraged to read many books. Strive for less than five. School attendance is very important to ensure students do not miss vital classroom instructional time. When students improve their attendance rates, they improve their academic prospects. We are asking everyone to strive for less than five absences during the entire school year. Parents, please help us to meet our attendance goal by making sure your children are absent no more than five days during the school year. You can mitigate an absent by deferring early dismissals of students until after 2:00 p.m. for appointments and other important activities. Mississippi law requires students be in attendance 63% of the school day in order to be counted as present. This means if students are not at school for 63% of the school day, they will be counted as absent, and they will not be counted toward the district's average daily attendance. The first day of school for teachers, the first day of school for our fabulous teachers is August 4th, 2016. The first day of student class for our scholars, the first day of school for scholars in Jackson Public Schools is August 9th, 2016. Breakfast and lunch. This year, once again, JPS students will receive free breakfast and lunch meals for 2016 through 2017. JPS will take part in the Community Eligibility Program. The program provides an alternative approach for offering school meals to local educational agencies and schools in low-income areas instead of collecting individual applications for free and reduced-price meals. The Community Eligibility Program allows schools that serve low-income children to offer free nutritious school meals to all students throughout the national school lunch and school breakfast programs. Superintendent's hotline. The Superintendent's hotline will be in operation again this year to answer any questions or concern on the first two days of school, August 9th and 10th. Hotline operators will answer calls from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Please call our hotline number, 601-960-2781. I don't know why I just thought of Drake. Does he do that hotline bling? Okay, sorry. It just popped in my head. Please forgive me. Jackson Public Schools calling all fathers and father figures to participate in the Million Father March. As a part of the nationwide Million Father March, Jackson Public Schools is calling all fathers and male relatives and caregivers to escort their children to class on the first day of school, August 9th, 2016. This event, which is part of our Watch Dogs, Dads of Great Students program, aims to inspire all fathers and families to be more engaged with their children's education. JPS educator receives Geospatial Technology Fellowship. With Ms. Sylvia Leggett, please come forward. Would y'all give her a hand as she comes? Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in congratulating Ms. Sylvia Leggett of Jackson Public Schools. Ms. Leggett was accepted to the T3G Conference, which stands for Teachers Teaching Teachers' Geographic Information Systems. Ms. Leggett competed for a spot at the Selective Institute and traveled to California this summer for the conference. At the conference, educators learned why and how to use GIS. The institute uses modeling, practice, discussion, and networking to boost participants' skill in teaching with computers, problem-based learning, conducting professional development, and using GIS. Ms. Leggett has worked in the Jackson Public School District in numerous capacities for 20 years, including a technology resource specialist, a grants manager, and a library media specialist. Ladies and gentlemen, one more time, please, let's celebrate Ms. Sylvia Leggett. Madam President, Board of Trustees, that concludes the Superintendent's announcements.
Thank you. Dr. Gray, we're now down to information items only.
All right. Madam President, Board of Trustees, council has a recommendation for the following item.
Please.
Thank you, Dr. Gray. Ms. Burke, members of the board, recommend that because this is a preview of the response to the audit findings, it really deals with an administrative matter that could lead to litigation inasmuch as it might be an appealable order. So I would like the board to go into, consider going into executive session for this particular matter.
Thank you, board members. You've heard our attorney. I'll entertain a motion to consider going into executive session.
It's been moved in second that we consider going into executive session.
Those in favor? Mr. Oppenheim?
I have a question before, before we vote.
Yes, Mr. Oppenheim, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, thank you for presenting this, what was from the audit, is this something that we're supposed to go on the executive session board? Or is it, I guess, like a suggested executive session?
It is a suggested recommendation. It's a recommendation from the lawyers.
I'm sorry, I mean, this must have been, must have been.
I'm sorry, Mr. Oppenheim. It is a suggest, suggestion, and of course, it's a recommendation, and as you know, with executive session matters, you can always not go into executive session, but this is, it's not mandated, but this is one of those items that we believe would be appropriate for executive session.
Okay, thank you.
Those in favor? Mr. Oppenheim?
I vote no.
Okay. All righty. Five to one.
At this point, you are closing the meeting to consider the executive session.
So we are now considering.
You would dismiss the members of the public to discuss the, in further detail, to the extent the board desires, whether or not you should actually go into executive session.
Right. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to have this discussion, and of course, anybody who wants to wait until after we've finished, then we will reassemble after this particular item is discussed.
The approval, approval, the amendment to Consulting Services for Marion Counseling Day Treatment Program. At this time, Madam President, with your permission, Board, I'll ask Dr. Mario Miller and Mr. Larry Greer to approach the podium for this presentation. We are recalling that this was rolled from the last meeting, and so the formal introduction of it has been made. At this point, we're going to be providing the detailed At this point, we're gonna be providing the detailed uh information that was requested by the board. Dr. Miller will begin and then uh we'll take questions from there.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Miller.
For your information, Madam President, pardon me, for your information, board members, what you have being passed out is the day treatment summary. Uh, Mr. Oppenheimer?
Yeah, sir.
We're gonna email this to you.
Uh, which piece are you emailing to me?
The day treatment summary, did?
Okay, I, I have it, if it's what's on the agenda, I have that in front of me.
Okay, this is, this is an additional uh si- a more succinct uh piece of paper.
That'd be great, and if everybody could speak into the microphone, it would be great.
Okay, good, yes, absolutely. So, Dr. Miller, could you instruct some staff to get this sent? It needs, it needs to go now, so he can get it while we're going over it. Uh Jade, if you'll email that to Ms. Shepherd and then she'll get it to Mr. Oppenheimer. All right, Mr. Oppenheimer, while, while you, you should get it in the next five minutes, uh if you don't mind, Madam President, Board of Trustees, uh we'll ask Dr. Miller to go ahead and, and go over the summary.
Please, Dr. Miller. Yes.
Madam President and Dr. Gray and to our board, um, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to go into some detail about our day treatment program that is proposed to you, you guys. Um, we're glad to have that opportunity. According to our summary here, that's before you, um. In a nutshell, this is what our day treatment will provide for our students. Students will be placed in the program, students placed in the program will have direct access to the curriculum on a daily basis. Preparation needed for district-wide assessment and will be prepared for statewide assessment, which are normally given online. They will have access to graduation options, access to transition specialists who are trained with assisting families and students with post-secondary goals and objectives, access to mental health services, which is, includes psychiatry, case management, student counseling and family counseling, and pharmaceutical follow-up. And they will also have transportation to and from school daily, okay? Staffing for the day treatment program will include, um, per JPS, a program director, an academic counselor, an office manager, four teachers, and four teacher assistants. Marion Counseling will provide three licensed master-level therapists, three licensed behavioral level, behavioral level count, case managers, a day treatment director who will be, will serve part-time, and a psychiatrist and a nurse practitioner who will also serve part-time. This program will operate in collaboration with the district's vision and widely important goals to ensure that we are building stronger schools together to have every scholar, every day, ready for life. And this will occur by increasing student academic performance and achievement and average daily attendance. On the back page, you have, I think it's important for us to um look at this continuum of services, which outlines how students progress through our special education continuum. First, you would have every student in the general curriculum with no supplementary service, that includes most of our students. Secondly, on the continuum of services, the students will go to a general education class with supplementary aids and services, okay? The third area is a resource support class where students are pulled out for at less than forty percent of the day. The next one on our continuum of services includes a self-contained placement in a special classroom for more than forty percent of the day. And the second, I mean, the, excuse me, the next one is a separate special education day school. This is what we, we are proposing, which means that all of our students who have gotten to this level have exhausted every level of our continuum of services to get to this point. Uh, we have had them in the regular classes and we've pulled them out continually as the IEP committee has seen, set forth and that they have decided is in the best interest of the child. So, at this point, we're needing our, our, our next step in our continuum of services, which is our special education day school program, which is our day treatment program. Further, we go on, if we need students to, if they have exhausted that uh placement, they can move to residential placement, which means more therapeutic services are be, will be available and the students will, as it's, it's noted, are residents of that facility. And then there's home and hospital placement. So I think it's important that we understand that these students who are special education students, special needs students, have gone through a continuum of services and they have gotten to the point to where they have worked the continuum, students, teachers have given all of the services that they're entitled to according to their IEPs. And this is the next step in the continuum.
And uh for clarification purposes, uh our scholars uh arrive at day treatment based upon the IEP team's decision.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes.
Board members, Mr. Jones and Ms. Sims.
Yeah, you, you mentioned, and thank you for what you do, Madam President.
Thank you.
Um, you mentioned in, you know, a about how you, how the student has exhausted all levels of support. What measure did you use to gauge the level of support to make sure that the, all those levels were exhausted? What, what measurement did you use?
We use data, every, every decision that we make, we have to have hard data. It is not according to what a teacher says, it's not according to what a parent needs, a parent wants. We use data that determines what students need. Uh, of course, parents are always going to be advocates for their children and so are our teachers. We're all advocates for our children. But at the same time, we can't just go on, you know, our opinions anymore. We, we have to use our behavioral data, we have to use our uh data for reading and math. Uh, we have to, and these students particularly will have the data that, that needs to be um that needs to be shared with us in order to make these informed decisions on where we place them. So we have behavior specialists in our district who keep up daily with data, behavior data on these particulars, this, this uh group of students.
Okay, I'm, I'm glad you mentioned that. So, so tell me how, excuse me, explain to us the process, I wanna make sure I'm using correct, you know, processes.
Certainly, sir.
Miss term, okay. Explain to us your um format and how this new relationship with Marion will benefit and assist you, the district, in better preparing the IEP process. Cause based on earlier uh comments, uh there was some uh, uh issues in there that were pointed out um by uh predecessor there, that um, and so we wanna know, the board wanna know how this new process will strengthen the IEP evaluation process, what that team looks like, okay? And then from there, explain to us how this information, implementation plan that has been proposed to you fits the assessment in-house um, uh review that is gonna strengthen us, okay? And then from there, explain that, how that will, with the new mandate that's coming down through MDE for inclusion for graduation, cause you mentioned graduation options, that these students, these students will be included in the, in the formal process. Thank you.
As far as our graduation options are concerned, um, our student, the benefits that we will have and uh what, that, that will be afforded to our students will be that they have access to everything that they need right here in JPS. We have a staff that will, that has crafted, that will craft a plan that will be conducive to their, that, that they're, that they're entitled to first, that are, that um fits their individual needs. Um, our students will be exposed to those services that are here in the city, um, as far as transition services are concerned, that those students, we're, we're talking about our students that have who are in high school, they're high school age students, who will get the, um, the transition services, which means that those students who are fourteen years of age or older, they're exposed to people in the community to come in and give them information on how they can prosper in the community and, and prepare for post-secondary, for exceptional post-secondary outcomes. All of the data that we gather is for our students to have better post-secondary outcomes than they have in, in the general education.
Now, to try to answer, I think, the first part of your question, uh, this is a response to recommendation that Dr. Fisher and I made in our last report to you. Uh, of course, we're talking about a very small uh population within Jackson uh, uh Public Schools. This uh arrangement that is proposed would bring the academic part from JPS and Marion Counseling Services would be providing the mental health component because the district doesn't have the expertise within, so we would be relying on professionals with experience and, and training in that. So, uh, as Dr. Miller pointed out, this is a less restricted environment than these students are currently in because they will be in a school within the district rather than being uh transferred out of district at this point. Also, it will provide for better uh coordination of services, particularly as the students transition out of their regular school, into whatever special class there is, and then back, because this is not intended to be a final destination. The intent of day treatment is to bring together these concentrated services so that students can be prepared to go back and be in their regular classroom, that's the intent of it. Does, does that help you?
Well, it, it, it doesn't give me clarity uh toward, um, excuse me, doesn't give, present clarity of Astorm because he mentioned something in his comments that he had, that, that they're gonna come up with a plan. You reviewed the data and to say that you're coming up with a plan to go with this at this stage is concerning. Um, the other piece of it is, it does not address the question of how you're going to, again, strengthen your IEP process to better, to better able the district to identify, to make sure that we've exhausted all support to assist these, as you called it, small population. And, and the reason I ask that question is because I know this, that, you know, we are stressed, what you did point out, in terms of not having as many number of, of, of staff that we need, we are short. But also too, how are we gonna support that, particularly when we're looking at an audit that's coming up? And I, and I still have not uh, uh heard, uh, don't feel comfortable with the comment of, uh, your planning, okay?
Madam President, Board of Trustees, if I may, Mr. Jones, we're back in uh, in trying to address. So the plan for the day treatment has been presented to you.
Right.
That is solid. I think what you may be referencing, if I'm understanding, is the, the specific scholar's plan. Is that right?
Well, y- y- yes, specifically, I know we can, individually, we can get into that, but more importantly, the process that will be used to, for every scholar.
Right.
I understand individually, they'll be modified based on whatever tier they're at or what have you, but it wasn't clear to me, based on Mr. Dr. Miller's uh comments, on exactly what his inter- internal staff, what plan they're gonna be using.
Right, certainly, so.
And we, we start on the fourth, you know, we start school on, on, on August the fourth.
On the, on the ninth, actually, but yes, the plan for a scholar is developed with an IEP team. So you can't craft that individually, it has to be a group of people, which include the educational professionals and this, the, the, the parent. So when a, the plan has to be crafted, when the team meets and they decide whether or not, first of all, the scholar actually goes to day treatment and then what happens in day treatment with that scholar. So that, that's the reason there is no plan for an individual student, because they're not developed until the meeting.
Okay, I appreciate that, that process.
Yes, sir.
But the question I asked again was, is how in this relationship with Marion Hill, will strengthen our staff? Better the IEP process, which was pointed out earlier, uh, I guess a year ago at this point, that we had some, some deficiencies in there. And based on that, an idea which I think some of those parties of that IEP process were not included. I, the counselor perhaps, and maybe the principal, some other people that you had mentioned earlier. So my question is, how would this process here, again, strengthen that IEP process toward evaluation? For then recommendation toward this process, because we have to make sure, as you've already stated, that our scholars are getting the most exhaustive piece of information that we can provide as a district.
Yes, sir, Madam President, Board of Trustees, Mr. Jones, I think um what answers your question is uh what Dr. Miller and Mr. uh Greer have alluded to, have mentioned already, is that this brings this process in-house. When these scholars have to attend day treatment up to this point, they have to be bused elsewhere.
Sure.
This tightens the process because we keep our scholars at home and provide uh those same services plus some additional services because we'll be using our own professionals.
Sure.
And so that's how the, that's how actually the process is tightened up.
Okay, all right.
Ms. Sims?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions and I'm not sure if we've already covered this. Is there special transportation from the child's home to the day treatment and back home?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Are, are they integrated in the full transportation system?
There is strength, there will be special transportation provided for these students, yes, ma'am.
And um you may have already answered this. Once a child goes into this day treatment, then there's periodic evaluations that they can come back out and be re-engaged into the full population.
Certainly, yes, ma'am. The, the intent of this program is not to exclude these students for the long haul. They are there for a short period of time and then they return to the regular age.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, I appreciate that. Are they eligible to participate in athletics or other programmings that are going on? Will there be any extracurricular opportunities for them to participate in anything but the treatment and, and school? Will they have other opportunities?
That will be determined uh by the IEP committee. Uh, all those decisions uh are made on an individual basis and the committee has full autonomy over that process, yes, ma'am.
Dr. Miller, could you?
Yes.
Just explain the IEP, uh, starting with the acronym.
Okay, I'm so sorry.
And so that, uh, so that people get a sense of what that looks like. And so that at the end of that team meeting, the results that come out of it and how that's done, that might be more clarifying if you would do that.
Okay, first of all, um, forgive me for not ex- for not explaining what the IEP is. I always assume, since I've done this so long, I, I think that everybody around me knows what it is. So, uh, IEP is an educational, individualized educational program.
Yes.
A student has an individual plan that is crafted around three main areas. Academics, vocational, and behavioral. Everything that we do are centered around those three things for our students. The academic part covers reading and math. Those are our key areas that we focus on. If we can get our scholars reading and if we can get them to do some math, we can, we can, we can give them a lot. You know, that's a lot to give a student. Reading and math are those, those primary subjects. As far as um behavioral, our students, we, we, for these partic- this particular um set of students, behavior has um, has been, has kind of impeded their educational process. They have um, they've kind of gotten off the track and they, they can't, you know, they can't be reeled in, in a general setting. So we focus primarily on behavioral goals for this. So, we focus primarily on behavioral goals for this group of students. So, these students have gone through and had behavioral intervention pieces placed on their IEP that says that they have to reach this certain level as far as reaching optimal behavioral outcomes. And then there's vocational. Vocational is for those students who are fourteen years of age, who are seeking post-secondary outcomes. Those students need to be exposed to the job market. They need to be exposed to careers. And so, what we do primarily in that section of the IEP is we give them a, just a track. And we put them on a track. It's based on their ability level and what they desire to do. And they work from age fourteen to attain what they want to do after, after high school, which is post-secondary. So, those three things are what we cover in an individualized education program. And if we follow all of those things, you know, it's a committed decision. You have your committee that has special education, a regular education teacher, a special education teacher, a principal, the parents, counselors, and any other person that the parent wants to bring into that meeting. And they all sit around, and the student, when the student turns fourteen years of age, they all sit around a table and they plan for this student's optimal outcomes. So, that's primarily, in a nutshell, what the IEP looks like. It's just a general plan from year to year that, that goes through, that you use throughout the year to get the optimal performance out of a student.
Well, I thank you very much for that. And I ask you to do that because I think it's important that, that, of course, parents who are involved with this process know so. But I think it's important that the entire general population know what we're doing and how we're trying to provide a continuum of care for our students. So, I know that you guys are, and we are all in some sort of alphabet soup sooner or later, based upon our own profession. But I think it's important that, thank you for that. That was a great explanation about the process because it doesn't mean that any one person is making a decision for this person, but a group of students, and what's most important, I think, is the parent. Because the parent is agreeing to this process and would be able to monitor it to make sure that what the decisions are that come from this group are consensus ones and that we are following and that they are following, and the kid, and the student is as well. So, thank you for that. Dr. Lynn?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Dr. Miller, a couple of questions. What are the hours of the therapist each day? How long are they working per day? I noticed that you got three that is budgeted, that you're planning on having. And are they all there at the same time, or, and how long are they there?
Yes, according to our list, they're all there full-time. And we will, they will have therapy at specific times of the day, where they will be pulled out of class. Now, mind you, these students require these services. They need these extra therapeutic services. So, they'll be pulled out of class and be, you know, under the care of a master-level therapist that will, that will give them the therapy.
And how did you get, how did you determine that you needed three? Was there a phone alert that you use, or that you look at past history? How did you come up with just three?
Shoot, if I can address that, and then with Dr. Marion, you know, because this is a mental health service, we have to meet the requirements set forth by the state through the Department of Mental Health. So, the, listening to the numbers that we project, this would meet that qualification set forth by a requirement rather than qualification. That's how the numbers were arrived at.
Okay. And how many students per therapist does that?
Ten. It's ten per therapist.
Okay. So, and you're projecting that three will handle?
Yes, that's a projection based on our recent history of them. I think normally in a year, we've had about forty-five students who've gone during the year, not at the same time, but typically, there would be about thirty students at one time.
Thirty students at one time, that's a lot. I just wanted to ask one other question. The data that you use to project these numbers of therapists, was it based on one-year, two-year, three-year history?
I'm sorry, I can't give you the exact number, but it's based on, you know, recent history. So, I would assume the last three years or so. Dr. Fisher and I have been associated with the district for four years, more closely in the last three. So, that would be my, my recollection, that's been about thirty every year.
Yeah. And the reason why I ask that, because that number could go up. Then what do we do then?
Well, there is built into the plan a provision. If we go over the number projected, then Dr. Marion has provided a per diem cost for additional students who will come into that because it would require him bringing in additional staff.
And is that part of the plan?
Yes.
So, that, that cost is included?
That provision is, yes. I mean, there's no way to say what the cost would be, but that provision isn't there.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Oppenheimer, do you have a question?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam President. And thank you, Dr. Miller and Dr. Gray, for coming forward with more information and outline of this. I think I echo Mr. Jones' concerns. I believe that was Mr. Jones speaking first. Really, in terms of the front end of preventing kids from even getting to this point based on interventions that are provided through their IEPs and through the process. I think even Dr. Hoag, who spoke, mentioned that, too. I know we've made a lot of progress. I know there's a lot more progress to go. And so, I'm concerned about another program that's going to require staff and whatnot. And so, my question, my first question is, and a couple of things, questions already answered, so I won't belabor. The teachers that are supposed to be in the classroom, are they exceptional education certified teachers?
Yes, sir. Yes, those students, I mean, excuse me, those teachers will be emotionally disturbed certified teachers, yes. That falls under the provision of special education.
They will be certified? And how are we looking in terms of our other schools, our traditional schools, in terms of exceptional education staffing? Are we, are we moving teachers out of schools where they are a bit short? Are we, are we, are these positions that are essentially being created specifically for the day treatment center?
We are going through and locating teachers wherever we can find them at this point. You know, we know our staff is short, but we have to do what we can do to make sure, to ensure that we provide optimal services for our students, yes.
Okay. So, I mean, so that concerns me, that we're already short and now we're going forward with this plan. And then my, my other question, I believe everything else has essentially been answered, but, oh, no, two other questions. If it's at Morrison Center, Morrison Elementary Center, is, does that mean that the REAP program is going to continue over there? Or is that being moved? And if they're not being moved, how are they going to be sharing space?
Dr. Gray, should you respond to that?
Yeah, so, well, I don't have a, I think Dr. Murray can best speak to how we're going to be moving REAP. But if I can back up just a little, and then we'll address that question, Mr. Oppenheimer. And so, this program is being created, and it's not, I don't want us to misunderstand that we're creating something new that's never existed. What we're doing is essentially bringing in-house what we've been sending out. And so, essentially, what that means is there are teachers in our district that are certified in EMD that will be brought to a centralized location as opposed to being out in the schools. So, I don't, you know, I don't want us to be so concerned about shorting teachers in places. We also have recognized that we have some schools that have more special education teachers than the number of special education students. And we have some schools that have special education students that need teachers. And so, the adjustment comes in balancing those numbers. So, this is really about doing two things. It's about bringing in-house what has been out of the district before, outsourced before, vendor, and so on. Bring it in-house with someone who we already work with, Marion Counseling. And essentially, the second piece of that is placing more strategically our special education teachers so that they can serve the scholars better. Now, we're making some adjustments to REAP. Dr. Murray or Sergeant, if you can come up, please, and speak to that for us.
Good evening. I think the question from Mr. Oppenheimer, if I'm mistaken, was what's going to happen with REAP?
Yes.
Currently, REAP is going to stay at Morrison.
Mm-hmm.
And the plan is to move those students to Rowan probably next year.
Yes.
But this year, they will remain at Morrison.
Sorry, I missed that. Where are they moving?
They're going to remain at Morrison?
Yeah.
With an adjustment, making, making an adjustment, Mr. Oppenheimer, a year from now.
Okay, we're going over to Rowan?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. And I appreciate, Dr. Gray, your comments just now. You know, I still generally have concerns, having done work advocating for young people, been at day treatment centers around the state, knowing that I don't always, and that's obviously just my opinion, don't always feel they're adequate. And then also, a lot of students shouldn't have been, been there in the first place, but that's not a JPS thing. That's, you know, much larger. And then, my concerns aren't about Marion Counseling by any means, just to be clear. I think they do really good work. My concerns are kind of the preventative measures to ensure that students don't get to the point where they're using this, the treatment center. And I'm still not sure if, if you're, if the comments about moving the teachers around, and I'm not sure where my question is in this, or if it's just a statement, the teachers, it still doesn't sound like that's resolving the issue of not having the right qualified educators with the right certifications in front of the right students while we're still short on students. So, you know, that's neither here nor there for now. But my last question, and I think maybe Dr. Hoag raised a question about dollars, and I know most of this is coming from IDEA and district funds. Is there something related to, and I could, I could get the thing go wrong here, is there something related to Medicaid that the district would be receiving if those students who would have been sent out to the day treatment center? Is that what Dr. Hoag was referring to? And if not, what was she talking about? Or do we have a response to what she raised in terms of the funding issue?
That is something that could be explored, but we don't know right now.
Okay, yeah. I would hope that whatever she raised about funding is explored because I would be concerned if something came up that, that there's like a, I don't know what it's called, like a double, you know, payment or whatever it is, you know, should they, should the IEP process send them to the day treatment center? Whereas before, some of the funds came from another source when they went externally. I don't know. I'm probably being really confusing. But what she raised, I think, is something that we need to be very mindful of.
Madam President, Board of Trustees, Mr. Oppenheimer, if it's okay, we're going to ask Jade and Sherilyn to come. Jade, of course, is our fiscal agent through the Special Education Department, Exceptional Education Department. And Sherilyn Miller, our CFO, they're going to respond to your concern.
Gray is board president, board members' attorney. Normally, the district is responsible for paying the first $4,918 for each child that's placed outside of the district. With the numbers we projected, thirty students, the district will be responsible for $147,000, which leaves paid, they pay close to $300,000. To answer your question about the Medicaid part, normally, the district been getting like $250,000 for the last couple of years. It'd be up to the discretion of the superintendent to place those funds. But we have allocated, if we were to go over the number of thirty kids for the program.
Thank you, Dr. Gray, Ms. Burke.
I think, I think I heard most of that, and what I didn't know, get it, Jeff filled in later.
And if I could, Mr. Oppenheimer, thank you, Dr. Gray, Ms. Burke, members of the board. This is not a new expenditure to the district. This is an expenditure that we have been doing forever. So, it's, it's not new. It's a, it's an expenditure that we have budgeted. We spend somewhere in a total, in an average year, somewhere around $900 to a million between the district and IDEA funds anyway. So, this is not a new expenditure to our budget. This is something that we've been doing for years. Neither is the Medicaid part. That is actually, provides an additional source of income for the district, which we will still continue. We also receive Medicaid funds from another process that we use as well. So, this is not going to be a negative of impact on the district's budget.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones, did you have a question?
Yes, I did. Thank you so much, Madam President, Gray, Dr. Miller. In terms of your evaluation, I noticed that in the proposal, there are three professional development scheduled for the staff. How did y'all arrive at that?
I think there's a presentation of the recommendation from Dr. Marion. Because she worked very closely with the task force in making these plans.
Okay. Do you feel three professional developments, you know, trainings are going to be adequate for where we are?
Well, that won't be all the training, because there'll be ongoing training. You know, that's the reason for the part-time director of day treatment. There'll be constant supervision and interaction, and also to coordinate the mental health aspect of this with the academic. So, and if you recall, you know, before we started this process, we went to Southern County and looked at their day treatment program. So, they've had that program for, I think, nine or ten years, and it's had the blessing of the state and seems to have real. So, a lot of the planning was based on what we saw there.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much. The other question I have is, how have you, how are you all structured the curriculum with the curriculum director back there on ensuring that these students are staying on their pacing guide?
The curriculum is, is based on the student's IEP. That's how we, we plan around that document. The students will meet the actual provisions of the IEP as it relates to reading and math and Mississippi.
College and career.
College and career readiness standards. Thank you very much. So, yes, we do, everything is centered around our state standards and our IEP standards as well, IEP goals.
Okay. So, so, within this process, I want to make sure I'm clear. There was a process where you all looked at the data. You saw where the anticipated students are. Y'all have come up with a plan to ensure those students are on task to meet college career readiness.
Yes.
Okay, to matriculate through graduation
Yes.
and everything, right?
Yes.
Just wanted, you know, trying to make sure I'm catching what you're saying. Appreciate you so much. Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Comments? I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Salute.
It's been moved in second that we adopt consent agenda items, General A. Additional questions? Those in favor? Those opposed?
I vote no.
No, Mr. Oppenheimer. Mr. Jones, I can't see you. Yes.
No.
Okay, I hear you, Mr. Oppenheimer. Okay, I hear you, Mr. Oppenheimer. Okay, thank you. Will now move to consent agenda items personnel.
None for tonight. It's, uh, we'll be moving those to our first, uh, regular board meeting in August.
Thank you. We're now down to other business, election of board officers. Uh, Honorable Doran Turner will preside.
Board members, as you recall, the current policy that you have requires that your board officer elections take place every year, um, around this time. Um, the policy provides that the first decision that you will make as a board is to decide the methodology that you will use for the officer elections. You can either do a, um, rotation process where your current officers will step up. Um, in that case, Dr. Lynn, who is the current vice president, would step into the role of president. Mr. Oppenheimer, who is the current secretary, would step into the role of vice president. And the policy then provides that the next longest-serving board member would move into the position of secretary. If I've calculated this correctly, that would be Ms. Sims. So Ms. Sims would move into the position of secretary. Um, you could either choose to do that rotation method, or you can decide to do a nominations method. If you do a nominations method, then office by office. I think we usually start with the office of president. We would accept nominations. The board would vote, determine who the next president would be, then we'd move to the vice president, then we'd move to the position of secretary. That process only becomes necessary if you determine that you will not do the rotation method. Um, so I would put out for your discussion and decision, uh, the first item of whether or not you want to use the rotation method, which would take care of it, or if you want to do nominations from the floor.
If I, if I could make a suggestion, Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Oppenheimer?
I, I know the last couple of years, we've done a, a nominating process by officer, so I would, I would suggest and, and move if it's, um, appropriate to do it by, uh, office.
Yes, Mr. Oppenheimer, that would be appropriate. I would, I will record that as a motion to use the rotation method. I'm sorry, is that?
That's not what I said.
Oh, I'm sorry, the nominate, I'm sorry, the nominations method. Is there a second to that motion? Do board members have any questions? Um, the motion on the floor is to use the nominations method for electing your officers for the 16, 17 school year. There aren't any questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Dr. Lynn, I didn't, did you review the aye?
Yeah.
Okay. Then the motion would pass, then you've decided that the methodology you will use will be the nominations method. So in that case, I will start with the position of president. Do board members have a nomination for the position of president?
I, I would like to nominate, uh, Mr. Jones as president.
Are there any other nominations for the office of president of the school board?
I would like to nominate our current sitting president, Ms. Burt.
Okay. Um, since Mr. Oppenheimer moved first, I will first move, uh, for those voting in favor of Dr. Lynn, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Jones for the office of president of the school board. Um, we have, uh, with Mr. Jones, a motion for him, those board members in favor of Mr. Jones as president. Please indicate your choice by show of hands.
My hand is up.
I have the votes of Mr. Oppenheimer, Dr. Lynn, and Mr. Jones for, uh, Mr. Jones as the president. And Mr. Hobbs, your vote, opposed? Okay, that's a tie. So I will move to, well, this is going to be somewhat unnecessary, but I think, but, uh, with that motion having, or that office having failed as a tie, now for the office of president, Ms. Burt, uh, re-elected to the office of president. Yes. Okay, uh, well, I can.
Yeah, he's asking for a vote. Are you, we're re-voting.
Oh, we're re-voting?
Yes.
Tell me something.
Okay, um, I had Mr. Hobbs, Ms. Sims. Dr. Lynn, you are in favor of Ms. Burt as president?
So if we re-voting?
Okay. Um, those opposed?
Uh, I oppose.
Okay, but you are in vote, you voted in favor of Ms. Burt, so that just leaves Mr. Oppenheimer and Mr. Jones voting against. Those in favor would be Mr. Hobbs, Dr. Lynn, Ms. Sims, and Ms. Burt, yourself voting in favor. So for the office of president, uh, by a vote of four to two, Ms. Burt will continue in the office of president. Now for the office of vice president, nominations for the office of vice president?
I nominate Dr. Lynn.
I nominate, uh, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Jones, do you accept the nomination? Are there any other nominations for the office of vice president?
I nominate Ms. Sims.
I decline.
Are there any other nominations for the office of vice president?
I nominate Mr. Oppenheimer.
Mr. Oppenheimer, do you accept the nomination for the office of vice president?
Uh, sure. Does that make sense after nominating somebody else? I don't know, but, yeah.
I'll start with the election of Mr. Jones as vice president. Those in favor of Mr. Jones as vice president?
I'm in favor.
Then, I believe.
I resent my nomination from you, Mr. Oppenheimer.
Then, Mr. Oppenheimer is, um, Mr. Jones is elected for the office of vice president. Now for the office of secretary, nominations for the office of secretary?
Ms. Sims.
Ms. Sims, do you accept the nomination? Are there any other nominations for the office of secretary? Then by a show of hands, all those in favor for Ms. Sims as secretary?
I'm in favor.
Okay, unanimous.
I'm sorry, Mr. Oppenheimer.
Okay.
I, I vote yes.
Okay. Then, board members, Ms. Burt, your officers for the 16, 17 school year would be Ms. Burt for the office of president, uh, Mr. Jones for the office of vice president, and Ms. Sims for the office of secretary.
Thank you. Congratulations, members. You have another year of hard work. Okay. We are now down to, uh, consideration to hold an executive session. So have we already made the motion to consider going into?
Yes, you've considered. So at this point, you would close the meeting to discuss whether or not you actually will go into executive session.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.